Call a meeting to order. And we'll note that all commissioners are present and the first item of business, it's the order of business, are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President, I would just like to add one item on 4F, it was missed on our copy of the agenda, but our municipal prosecutor, Beth Ebert, is here and will give you a report as to municipal court prosecution over the past several months.
Okay, anything, any other changes? Hearing none, then, would there be a motion to approve the order of business with the one addition Mr. Cooley mentioned?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay, the motion carries. Second item then is the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda, the first item we have there is regarding to our city attorney position, Mr. Kessel will introduce this.
Thank you President Johnson and Commission, as you are aware, Mr. Cooley has submitted his resignation, is moving on to what he thinks are greener pastures, and so we are in an effort to try and replace him. I did contact the firms of Evil Top Sichler and McAuf Kellogg to see if they are interested in providing interim legal services until we can replace Mr. Cooley. Evil Top Sichler has chosen not to provide a proposal at this time, and what you have before you is the proposal from McAuf Kellogg. Just some highlights from that proposal, as you can see that the, it's intended to go until the end of December of 2015, but there is a 90-day out clause, so that is our intention as staff to open up the position and retain in-house counsel, but it will take us some time to get there. And so this agreement is meant to bridge the gap between Mr. Cooley's end date and the hire date of retaining in-house counsel. There's an hourly rate in here and a cap, depending on the amount of hours that is required, that cap could be engaged, and then the risk is borne by the McAuf Kellogg firm. We, it does require that the replacement attorneys, Ms. Christina Winko would be the primary, and the, we'd also have a secondary, Jared Larson, would attend these meetings, city commission meetings, planning and zoning commission meetings, leadership team and executive team meetings as well. So, it would be my recommendation that we engage McAuf Kellogg per the agreement that is in your, in the materials provided to you, and then engage in a hiring process to retain in-house counsel. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
I just have a question of clarification, you said the contract was from now until December, but looking at the agreement, it says that it's a 12-month period commencing on April 21st, 2015, ending April 21st, 2016. That's a one-year contract.
I would, I would use that language, we did negotiate a couple different agreements, so that would be fine with me, it's, again, it's our intention to start a process immediately to go in-house, and so I don't perceive that this will, this contract would last even till December, so I don't think we'll take full advantage of, of a one-year agreement. And, and Mr. Peterson is well aware of our intentions in doing so.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I think it's a prudent recommendation on the part of Mr. Kessel, in the past with our professional positions, it's taken some time to, to fill those positions and, and, you know, it could take upward to a year to find the right person to replace Mr. Cooley. I think it's a prudent move, so.
Excellent.
Well, I wouldn't go as far as to say excellent, but prudent, yeah, so. Any other comments? Not, we have an agreement here, would, would there be a motion regarding that agreement?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve and second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker, Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Move to item B, this has to deal with a restaurant beer-only on-sale liquor license, and Mr. Kessel will introduce this.
Thank you President Johnson, as, as you said, this is for a new restaurant in town, Kadoba, they're locating in the new building just on the grounds of the mall, they intend to be open very soon, and they would like to provide beer as part of their restaurant offerings. They have undergone the background check, the police department has completed that and signed off, they've completed all other paperwork related to the license issuance and paid their fees, so it is our recommendation to award this license, and just for your reference, these licenses are not capped, so we could issue several of these types of licenses. And if there's any questions, I'll take them now.
These are the license where the requirement though is that food sales exceed?
Fifty percent.
Be at least fifty percent, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, is there a motion regarding this item?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Jackson, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item C are the 2015 Southwest Regional Grants, and Mr. Kessel will also introduce this item.
Thank you President Johnson, as you are aware, the city commission gets the great privilege of providing grants to local entities in the southwest region of North Dakota, we fund this by using sales tax dollars, and we return approximately $50,000 annually. This year we had requests in excess of $225,000, so obviously we weren't able to provide everybody with the amount of money that they did desire. The recommendations for award are brought to you by a committee that's made up of Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Steiner, and myself, the total this year was $50,355. Some of the highlights, just so you're aware of the types of things that are asked for for funding, include emergency notification system in the city of Beach, an armory renovation in the city of Headinger, pool upgrades in the city of Mott, fire helmet light replacements also for the city of Mott, self-contained breathing apparatus in the city of New England, and park upgrades in the city of Richeton. Those just represent a few of the highlights of the grants that are being recommended to you this evening, and it would be the commission's, or this committee's recommendation that you make the awards as they've been included in your packet. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Just a correction, the emergency notification system is for the city of Bellfield.
Oh, did I say Beach? Okay, I, my apologies. It's a B word.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel, are there any other comments or questions regarding these awards, these grants? Not, would there be a motion to approve the grant awards?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Altman, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Decker, Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll go to item D, Woodhaven Development Agreement, and Mr. Cooley will introduce this item.
Thank you Mr. President, Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a proposed development agreement for the Woodhaven First Edition, this is a proposed subdivision that is located north of 21st Street East and to the east of 10th Avenue East. This is a single-family residential subdivision, approximately 53 lots, it is, the agreement is substantially similar to other development agreements that the city commission has considered and approved in the past, and it does include the additional development fee imposed upon this developer to contribute to its costs for the Lift Station 14 project. Lift Station 14, if you recall, is being constructed up on the corner of 21st Street East and 10th Avenue, and there will be a sewer line that connects Woodhaven First Edition to that lift station. That development fee is negotiated in this agreement at $190,000, that's our best estimate at this point of what that line will cost, at least for Woodhaven's usage of that line. It will be oversized in a certain extent to allow for other entities to connect into that sewer line if that becomes necessary in the future. City staff would recommend approval of the development agreement, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley, any comments or questions? There are no comments or questions, is, would there be a motion regarding this agreement?
I'll move to approve the Woodhaven Development Agreement.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker, Mr. Steiner, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item, item E is regarding surplus property, and Mr. Cooley will introduce that.
Mr. President and Commissioners, if you recall, at the last city commission meeting, you had a very lengthy list of property that the city did identify or declare as surplus property to allow for sale. On the last couple of weeks, we have identified a couple of additional pieces of property that can be surplus. There is a, three vehicles, a 2003 Crown Victoria from the assessing department, a crew cab pickup from code enforcement, pickup from the engineering department, and a piece of IT equipment that is no longer needed by the city either. We would like to ask the board of commissioners to approve this resolution, and if it does meet with your approval, we would add this property to the surplus property auction that is occurring, I believe on May 4th, May 2nd, May 2nd. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley, any comments or questions? This would be Resolution 15, 20-15?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Decker, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Chair votes aye, motion carries. We go to item F, and these are reports, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you President Johnson and Commission, I just have the legislative report for you this evening, and, and two quick bills to discuss, the first one is House Bill 1377, this is oftentimes referred to as the bucket bill. It's referred to that because it arranges the amount of dollars that are placed in each of the funds, oftentimes referred to as buckets. The first $200 million would go into the general fund, and these are fund, these are dollars that are taken from the extraction tax. The next $250 million would go to property tax relief, the next $100 million would go to the general fund, the next $100 million after that would go to the CIF Fund, or Strategic Investment Fund. This is important because the CIF Fund is the account that funded the surge payments that was distributed recently, so this is a very important fund for the city of Dickinson and other local political entities, if we would hope that another surge fund could be possible next biennium. The other thing that accumulates in this CIF Fund are state-related mineral rights, lease bonuses that are paid to the state, or political subdivisions that don't participate, so the next fund is a $25 million disaster relief, that fund has a cap of $75 million on it, the existing balance in that fund exceeds the $75 million, so they don't anticipate putting any funds, any additional funds into the disaster relief fund. And then the last, in the current legislation, 75% of any funds that happen after all these buckets are filled, 75% of those dollars go back into the CIF Fund, and 25% go into the legacy fund. Well, that is changed, and if this passes, 70% of those dollars will still go into the CIF Fund, and 30% would go to fund local political subdivisions. And right now, the current estimate is about $61 million would be distributed to local political subdivisions, and they would do that according to previous distribution amounts. There would be two distribution days, March 1st and August 1st. They would make no distributions unless that fund had at least $10 million in it. If it does exceed $10 million, then the distribution would be created. Right now, that is estimated that local political subdivisions would divide about $61 million with current price and current production in place. If the big trigger does not go into effect, that raises that number to $181 million on the same current production and current price. The state would receive approximately $700 million in that same scenario if the big trigger does not go into effect. So, if the big trigger doesn't go into effect, that, and this legislation passes, it means that the state would, would distribute to local political entities about 34% of the GPT revenue. We entered this biennium with about an 18% return rate, which was one of the lowest in the nation in regards to revenue sharing and taxes of this regard. So to move it to 34% would be a tremendous change and very, very helpful, obviously, to local political subdivisions. I can't tell you yet what Dickinson's share would be, I haven't worked those numbers, so I don't, I anticipate that question, and unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you to this evening. I can tell you that there's been a lot of debate with regard to oil hub cities and their definition, this would retain a definition of 12,500 as a minimum population, it would also require that they have at least 1% of their employment in the oil and gas area. So we are, we are holding our breath and hoping that the bucket bill, as it's referred to, will pass. We have discussed this legislation and our support with our local legislators, if, if your opinion differs in any way, please, please state that to me now so that I can bring that to our legislators. But other than that, there's only one other piece of legislation in that, that we're really tracking with, with great interest, and that's received a lot of newspaper credit here lately, and that's that flat tax that the Republicans introduced very recently. It has not made the Democrats very happy, but what the intent is, is to apply a flat rate that would not be subject to triggers, so in an environment like we are in today, we would have additional funds that would flow through the system and fund all of the appropriate agencies, including local political subdivisions. In a rising environment where production and/or price goes up, it would leave some money on the table, and that, of course, is what the Democrats have been talking about. Overall, I guess it comes down to what your picture of the future will bring. If our production is going to remain at that 1.2 to 1.3 level and similar prices, the flat tax is probably appropriate, but if production does go up to close to 2 million and/or price goes up to 80 or 90, we'll leave some, some money on the table. So those are the two pieces of legislation that we're, we're following with great interest, and if you have opinions on either of them, certainly let me know what those are. And that would conclude my portion on legislative update unless there's thoughts.
Question, the formula bill though, that has not been passed yet, has it not? They're still holding that?
They are holding that, they don't want to send that over, it did pass the Senate, but it has not been sent to the House yet because they don't want, until 1176 is done, they don't, and that 1176 is the, the formula bill, they don't want that to be affected by the bucket bill. So they're hoping to pass that and then send the bucket bill over to the House.
Yeah, the, the Senate passed a different version than the House passed.
That's correct. And the concern at the conference committee, the, the House is being pushed to, for concurrence on the Senate version, the concern that we have is basically two issues if it goes to conference committee, and the first is what non-oil hub cities receive. The chairman of the appropriations in the House does not believe that non-oil hub cities should receive funds, and they're scheduled to receive about $250,000 per percentage of oil employment or partial percentage of oil employment. The total bill on that is estimated to be about 1.7 million, which would be distributed to cities like Grand Forks and Fargo and Bismarck and so on, and Jamestown and Mandan. And then the other is related to non-oil county roads, so both of those issues would not significantly impact Dickinson or southwest North Dakota, but nevertheless, once it gets to conference committee, you just don't know what else can be, can be changed or tinkered with.
Is there concern with the flat tax? From what I've read, the, the reservations have said they're going to pull out of the deal, and that's 30% of the production.
That is a significant, they, they, as early as last year, entered into agreements with the state of North Dakota, I'm hearing the exact same things that you just stated, that there could, that could jeopardize the agreement, and they would want to pull out of, of that existing contract. I don't know a lot of the details with regards to their intentions, other than what's been publicly available.
I, I don't see how the city can take a position on that bill, I mean, it, it's not something that was, to my knowledge, previously discussed as a concept, that we had a chance to get better educated on it, and so I, I don't see how we can take a position one way or the other.
And you're correct, there's been no hearings, nor public, public hearings with related to that flat tax bill.
Other comments or questions on the legislative update?
Is the League taking a position?
The League of Cities is not taking a position, the Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties is pushing for concurrence on the House bill, on the formula bill, and hoping that there are no changes. We have not collectively, as a board, got together on the flat tax. That concludes that, that portion, I do have a couple other things, the, the first one is, I have invited Niles Hushka, who is the executive director or CEO of KLJ, he is, that firm has been engaged by the state to conduct several different types of research on behalf of oil and gas production and such, and so he is willing to come to Dickinson and give us his thoughts on, on what the recent changes mean for future production, future pri, well, maybe not so much future price, but future impacts of, of oil in western North Dakota. We're proposing June 1st as a meeting time and 3:00 PM, and we, so we just hold it right before a city commission meeting. He has about an hour's presentation, 45 minutes to an hour, it's a PowerPoint, we'd like to open it up to the public so that anybody can attend, but if you're agreeable, we'd like to set that and invite the planning and zoning board to attend as well, do a joint meeting. Any concerns with that thought?
That's fine.
Good, the, the other thing that I wanted to bring up that isn't specifically on the agenda, but was included as an addendum in your packets, is a report, just a brief report, that encapsulates some of the concepts and discussions that Commissioner Jackson and I have had with developers. We've met with about 22 different developers, we have other meetings scheduled in the future, so this discussion will be ongoing, and we've, the main thought process with, with why we're having these meetings is obviously, there's been a slowdown in, in development in oil production in western North Dakota, and that's had an effect on our community. So in order to kind of diagnose what these developers' thought processes are, do they intend to continue with development, are they going to slow it down, are they going to stop completely, we wanted to ascertain their thought process, and that's, that's what we did. I'm happy to say that, that almost all were still very happy about their choice to develop in Dickinson, they were excited about prospects, we can reasonably expect around 150 to 165 residential units constructed in 2015, that includes everything from single-family houses to apartment units, and then an additional 390 approximately in 2016. But the, the overall was, was positivity about the future of Dickinson and progress. We asked about demand, and there's no doubt that commercial demand has slowed, as a lot of commercial entities who had signed letters of intent have since withdrawn those letters and are waiting to see how the marketplace will respond to a changing oil environment. They have not pulled them, meaning they have no more intentions of developing in Dickinson, they've simply said, we want to wait, we want to see what the impacts will be in the next few months. The single-family housing market remains very strong, the, especially for houses in that 275 to 350 range, those, that seems to be the sweet spot with regards to sales and with regard to construction. High-density residential apartment units has definitely slowed, we have seen a drop in monthly rents, at the time of, of this print, the average was between 200 and 300. Now, that's, that's an average, there are some that have dropped their rents more than that. So, and overall occupancy has shown a decline as well, where people once had a waiting list, they now have some, some open or vacant units. We're, from what we were told, most of those vacancies are well within their, their budget or what they would normally expect, so there shouldn't be a lot of concern, but again, we haven't talked to everybody yet. The primary roadblocks to further construction, we heard a few, bank lending was definitely repeated several times, the banks are tightening up with regard to their lending, land costs and infrastructure costs were also cited, and then surprisingly, I thought finding builders and subcontractors would be a little bit more prevalent, we heard that concern, but not near as often as we heard bank lending, that was the primary one, and then the next two were land and infrastructure costs. It's, it's worth noting that the people that we interviewed had a lot of positive comments about city staff, they really appreciated the changes that were made rather recently, especially in the city engineering department, so that, that speaks well of engineer kubis, and so we're, I'm happy to, to share that, and the rest of the staff, so that was appreciated. There were some discussions of incentives, are there things that the city of Dickinson should do to incent the types of construction that we desire the most, and that seems to be single-family housing. What, that prices are high, and they continue to be high. So, two things that really came up in regards to that discussion were some kind of waiver of the builder, the building permit fee, especially in light of the new impact fee that, that just came on the books this year. That surprised some developers and some builders, and as a, I will personally take some of the blame for that surprise, we, we probably should have went to the housing construction meetings and talked more about that, but, but that added about $4,000 to the average cost of, of a new home in Dickinson. We could offset that by waiving some of the building permit fee, if we decide to do something like that, I think it should be per builder, and that, maybe they get a 50% waiver after they've built five, because we don't, I'm not sure we want to, it's not an incentive if they were going to build five homes, it's only an incentive if they choose to build something beyond what they were already planning to build. planning to build. And quite honestly, I'm not sure that waiving that building permit fee will be enough to incent them to build an extra couple of homes. And then the other is, what you've heard before is the private funding of special assessments that also came up. We would have to write an ordinance to support that. And in fact, we just had a discussion again today with regard to a private developer's interest in funding special assessments. Takes the risk off of the city and moves it more towards the funding entity. I do think it's been a best practice to continue to use, the judicious use of R3. And if we do entitle high-density, that we put it into the development agreements, that it gets automatically rezoned to R2 if they don't build by a certain timeframe. I think that's been a good practice. You have to be careful, because sometimes you do need an R3 when you're using it as a buffer zone between a commercial entity and a single-family housing. So, but I think we can continue to identify that language and put it in development agreements. So, in summary, this has been a really good endeavor. I appreciate Commissioner Jackson, it was his thought process to go through this. I've certainly learned a lot about what the plans are. We always ended the conversation with sharing our 2015 and 2016 capital plan, so that they're aware of the investments that the city's making to help them become successful. And then I'll just close by saying that, you know, again, optimism continued throughout these developer discussions, and I think we're going to see, what we thought was going to be a 2015, a big year, we'll probably see that delayed till 2016. I think that'll be a bigger construction year than 2015. Nevertheless, we still have a lot of 2015 construction happening in town. Unless there's questions, my last item is just to remind the commission that we've set the Board of Equalization meeting just prior to our next city commission meeting on the 4th of May. We'll begin at 3:30 and then conclude when business is concluded. So if you wouldn't mind adding that to your agendas, I'd appreciate that. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. We'll come back to Mr. Kessel if you have further questions, comments for him. It is past 5 o'clock. We do have a timetable agenda item at 5 o'clock, and that is a public hearing on the proposed tobacco sales ordinance change. At our previous meeting, that did, first reading of that change did pass. This evening, we'll be holding a public hearing and will not be acting on second reading until our first meeting in May. So at this time, we're going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance change may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. So the public hearing is open.
President Johnson, Commissioner, good afternoon. My name is Kelly Freeman. I'm against revising this ordinance. I am a nurse and I'm a licensed addiction counselor. And unless I'm blessed to sit up here today and talk about the physical and psychological effects that tobacco has, not only on children, but in children also, that I see and work with every day, I'm not here for that. Today, I'm here because I'm a mother and I'm raising my kids, starting in this wonderful community. As a parent and as a professional, I'm against revising this ordinance. I think we need to slow down and consider who we are talking about here. These are children. By law, they're children, and talking about brain development, they're children. They're kids. They go to school every day. They have piles of homework. They play sports, an extra break, and they're just started driving. They can attend their first term in this town. They hang out with friends and family. They start dating, they text, they Facebook, Instagram. For a lot of them, this is their first job. They start to think about where they should go to college and what they want to do when they grow up. At this age, they're forming their own identities and independence. They do not need somebody in charge of their every move, however, they still need to be monitored and advised. They are kids. These kids in Dickinson cannot only not possess or use these tobacco products, they also cannot buy lottery tickets, they can't vote, they can't rent a hotel, a car, apartment, they can't get tattoos or piercings, they can't get married, they can't drop out of school, they have a city curfew. They're not even allowed to rent a golf course, golf cart at the golf course here, and they have to be at least 17 to even go to Raven Arum, the AR movie theater, without parent consent. I came across an article titled, "Why is my 16-year-old acting like he is missing part of his brain?" Because he is. The part of their brain that deals with reasoning, problem-solving, decision-making, judgment, and other consecutive functions is still being formed. It's not fair to them. These kids should be not, should not be put into position with this kind of responsibility and left alone in these convenience stores. In the April 6 meeting, it was stated that kids will lose their job if they give in to selling to minors, so that would weigh heavily in their decision to make this decision, this choice to sell to them. I question that. How can we say that knowing that with brain development? And what does it really look like to be fired at age 16 or 17? Does it mean that, well, go without groceries or a place to live or key for transportation like you and I would? Absolutely not. Losing your job at age 16 or 17 is a lot different than losing your job when you're adult with responsibilities. I have no doubt, everybody knows Dickinson is changing, and I do feel that for business owners. I don't know what the answer is. I think they could consider increasing the wages like McDonald's in town here. They, and most, have made national news recently for their hourly pay. I've heard these business owners' arguments that other cities in our state are doing that and have allowed this to pass. But if we want to look at the bigger picture here, let's consider the several major cities in the United States, including the most populated city, New York City, that have increased, increased their age to sell tobacco products to age 21. I do not think we should lower our standards in this city at the expense of our children. They are vulnerable. We need to work together as a community to protect them. Growing up is hard enough. Let the kids be kids. Please do not revise this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. These should be plugged in.
President Johnson, Commission members, good evening. My name is TJ Yearkey. I'm the educator and advocate for Tobacco-Free North Dakota. Briefly on that, Tobacco-Free, we're an expansive coalition here in North Dakota of different healthcare organizations, individuals, from corner to corner, from industry to industry. We work closely with our local public health units, with our hospitals, et cetera, different healthcare officials. You know, one of our biggest mission, just so you have some context why I'm here today, is to improve and protect the public health of all North Dakotans by reducing the serious health and economic consequences of tobacco use, which many of you may know is the state's number-one cause of preventable disease and death. I traveled here today to ask that you dismiss the proposal asking to lower the city's age to sell tobacco products. Despite any workforce issues a business may be facing, the health of our youth should be of the utmost importance in this discussion. There's no doubt, I'm sure all of you believe that as well. Mending the city code will only harm the tremendous efforts that have been done to curb youth smoking in the Dickinson area specifically, but of course statewide. Studies indicate that lowering the age will only foster more youth smoking, as they will have easier access to tobacco products. And I'm going to speak to one specific study that you may or may not have read or seen as you started this discussion, and it's titled, "Sources of Tobacco for Youth in Communities with Strong Enforcement of Youth Access Laws." This study was done and conducted by the Massachusetts, or in Massachusetts and a couple other states, by the Department of Family Medicine and Community Health at the University of Massachusetts. And they, they looked at, what they did, they took 68 teenagers, ages 12 to 19, all of which were identified by school officials as teenagers that smoked. And they prefaced these, these discussions they had with these teenagers by saying, you know, kind of some starter questions. You know, "The health department, quote, 'The health department in this community thinks it's just about impossible for kids under 18 to buy tobacco in this town.' Are they right? When the health department wants to see if a store will sell to kids, they hire a kid who has never smoked, smoked to try to buy tobacco pro, cigarettes, to buy cigarettes, excuse me. Do you think you could do better at buying tobacco than these kids?" I say that to preface that they really wanted to make sure they had these 68 individuals, teenagers, youth, minors, in the mentality, "Hey, we're going to find every way possible to access cigarettes and tobacco products." That's what the study was focused on. However, are youth, our 12- to 19-year-olds, accessing tobacco when they cannot legally purchase it themselves? So the study goes on. The study reads in some cases, or in some pieces of it, "In some communities, all the high-school-age subjects had friends who worked in stores or gas stations and had no difficulty buying tobacco. This appears to be the primary commercial source of tobacco in most of the communities studied. Some of the youth that worked as clerks indicated that they would sell to anyone, whether they knew them or not. Youth participants also described a standard scam. If the boss is present, or if there's a surveillance camera, the clerk will ask for proof of age. Now, the underage buyer will then hand the clerk something that resembles an identification card, however, it is not. The clerk will pretend to check the ID and then sell them tobacco products." The study also provides many recommendations to strengthen local laws to better prevent youth access to tobacco products. One recommendation is that when making hiring decisions, store managers should be aware of teenagers, and unfortunately, this was in there, young men, being a male myself, show the greatest predilection for making illegal sales, even with appropriate training. The study also addresses theft. It talks about one scheme, one common scam, really, that adolescent sale or retailers will do, let's see, and I'm quoting one of the participants in this, says, let's see, "People that like to work at a big store," and it names a store, "will just run this scam." It says, basically, it'll have a youth come up, grab six cartons of cigarettes, come back, sell them for measly 50 cents, a dollar, although it's well over $100 for six cartons of cigarettes. They're completely undermining the store's owner and the manager, that retailer that they're working for. And this is just one theft scam that youth, that adolescent retailers were doing to get access to tobacco products. The studies show that lowering the age to sell tobacco products will be detrimental to this community and other communities that could, you know, look to decrease this age. I also hope all the options have been exhausted, and I'm sure they have been if this proposal is, does go forward. I mean, there's, there's plenty of other opportunities out there to address a workforce shortage if there is one. But I do want to point to an article that was published this morning by a young lady, Catherine Lim, you may know her. The article talks about, specifically in the Dickinson community, talks about a couple individuals who are struggling. We all know the, what's going on in the western parts here in North Dakota, and that we are seeing some consternation. We're seeing individuals who have moved up here now. Do they wait? Do they sit until oil prices rebound? Or do they move and try to find the next job? Talks about a couple individuals. One interesting quote was from Tom Pickin, who's the Director of Social Services for Dunn County. And he said that there's currently one of the largest caseloads he's seen in his county, Dunn County, with 40 new applications just in March alone. But in Dickinson, the story goes on to talk about an individual who was laid off at a gas station, a convenience store here in Dickinson, and it says he was laid off because of slow business, is what the story says. I point this out because if, if this is the number-one reason why the proposal was made to decrease or lower the age from 18 to 16, clearly, I don't think the workforce shortage is a problem in Dickinson, as you may already know. I'm certainly not a businessman. I'm not going to act like a businessman. I like to think I have some business sense, but, you know, that kind of goes out the door in some cases and some days. But a lot can be done to attract employees in many different instances, and I'm sure, again, these business owners, yourselves, have looked at, you know, are wages commensurate? Are hours flexible? Are they properly trying to attract 30, 40, 50-year-olds who may be struggling to find a position here in the Dickinson community? I mean, plenty of other sources out there to find employment, employees, and I hope that yourselves and the community business owners also are seeking these opportunities as well. So I hope, again, you will not consider and in fact vote to strike down this proposal here come May 4th. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but, and again, I want to make sure, I will follow up with you individually via electronic communication, happy to share these studies and publications.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Johnson and City Commission members. My name is Kristy Wolf. I am the Program Manager for the American Lung Association in North Dakota. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal to lower the city's age to sell tobacco. I'm going to start off by telling you my story. I was a teen smoker. I smoked my first cigarette at the age of 14. By 16, I was a half-a-pack-a-day smoker. How did I get cigarettes when I was a youth? Easy. There was vending machines across the entire state. I could walk into just about any business, hop in my change, and buy my cigarettes. I also, we had this little thing, we found whoever could have the best handwriting in our group. In our group, her name was Cheryl. And she would write notes from our moms that we'd take into the convenience store and ask them to, "Please sell a pack of cigarettes to my daughter. Thank you for your time." And she'd sign her name, and it worked. Oh, how times have changed. We know this wouldn't, would no longer work. We've removed many of the vending machines from across the state, only in places that adults can access. The reason that's happened is because we've wanted to keep tobacco out of the hands of youth. Health advocates and elective officials have worked very hard to do this. We've put up these barriers across the state. Changing the city ordinance would be a step in the wrong direction. I'd like to direct you to the purpose of Article 21.2. It says, "The city of Dickinson has recognized that illegal tobacco purchase and use by minors is a significant problem with the city. This section is intended to reduce the illegal purchases of tobacco products by minors and to reduce the accessibility of tobacco products to minors. We do recognize that this is a problem. North Dakota youth smoking rates are above national average. Our youth smokeless tobacco rates are nearly double the national average. The CDC has recently put out a study that said youth e-cigarette rates have tripled in one year. These rates were already extremely high. Over 1,000 residents die, North Dakota residents die each year from tobacco-related death and disease, and over 1,000 people a day die in the U.S. from tobacco-related death and disease. We cannot quit this fight. We cannot take down barriers that we've put up. So I ask you, please continue to have the highest possible health standards in place, and I ask you to please not lower the city age to sell tobacco in Dickinson. Thank you."
Thank you.
Hello, President Johnson and City Commission. My name is Jennifer Schaefer with Tobacco Prevention at the Southwestern District Health Unit. This is a moral and ethical case for action and to keep things in place that will affect the safety and health of our children. Tobacco is a uniquely hazardous product, being highly addictive as well as causing ill health, premature death, and many health concerns. Smoking starts mainly among children and young adults. Hardly anyone does start using tobacco as a mature adult. Children cannot and do not make informed decisions about using tobacco. Protecting our children from known hazards is viewed as a moral imperative and a social responsibility. Youth are vulnerable to social and environmental influences to use tobacco. Those messages are everywhere, and images that make tobacco appealing are all around. Our young people want to fit in with their peers, so prevention is critical. Tobacco products are obtained from social sources like friends, family, older adults, by borrowing them, bumming them, theft, or giving money to an older adult that can buy for them. A large percentage of minors purchase tobacco from small stores and gas stations. So we would appreciate your consideration in this youth access tobacco ordinance of Dickinson, number 147. Dickinson, Number 1478, and it being left in place. Thank you, and if there's any questions, I'd be welcome to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Good evening, President Johnson and Commissioners. Jared Sheeler from Dickinson, Managing Director of the Hub Convenience Stores and the person who originally brought this request to the City Commission four to six weeks ago to get this changed. I do want to address a couple of things before I get into my testimony. Number one, Mr. Yerga, you referenced a letter from Catherine, or an article from Catherine Lim in the Dickinson Press on Sunday, I believe a week ago, and I believe you referenced it because that individual says he was laid off from the hub, which is my business. For the record, I have no idea who that guy is. The hub has never laid off anybody, and we never will. I'm not sure where that information came from, so that's one. I'm not going to stand up here and try to dispel anything that was said by the passionate people that came up here before me. In fact, the vast majority of what they said, I agree with. I mean, they're absolutely right. I'm not a fan of smoking. I grew up in a smoker's household, can't stand the smell of cigarette smoke, though as a retailer, my job is to offer products, it's not to dictate what people can and can't buy. That's what the laws are for. I also wanted to, you know, to address the fact that, you know, I probably took advantage of a segue when I first introduced this topic, saying, bringing this up for challenges in hiring people. You know, we at the hub, we have a great team. We've got a full staff. We've got more people on staff than we need, and I've got a stack of applications of people that I can't even consider to hire because we just don't have the room for. So, hiring is not an issue, but what I will say is, the same passion that all the presenters before me shared for really eradicating tobacco, period, I share that same passion for people. And I'll reiterate, that's why I brought this towards you in the first place. I believe that our industry is a great first job for high school students. You learn a lot of different ethics. You learn work ethic, hard work. You learn, at the hub, we get to serve 1,000 people every single day. That's quite a privilege that we have to be able to do that. So, when you're getting a sample size of 1,000 people a day, you really reach the entire fabric of the western North Dakota community. And to be able to put somebody, a young person, young impressionable person, in front of that many different kind of personalities and saying, "We get the opportunity to serve these people," you can learn so much from that. One out of every 11 Americans say that at some point in their life, they worked at a convenience store. That's quite a bit. That's quite a bit. I take the responsibility of taking somebody in their first job very seriously. It's something I'm passionate about and something that I want to do. I want high schoolers in their first job coming to the hub, coming into this industry. I want to take them under my wing and help them get ready for whatever it might be in their career after high school. That's an opportunity that I take very seriously and that I want, and can I do that now? Yes. So, some of you are probably wondering, yeah, you can put them in the kitchen or in the car wash, and we do do that. But I want to put people in a position where they can succeed and use the talents that they have. You guys have all, all you people in front of me are showing some success in the private sector, in business, and you know that part of building a great business is having a great team, and a great team might not mean the most talented, the most experienced people. I see the best team as a mixture of personalities and ages, and that includes high school students. And I want them on my cash registers. I want the best of the best high school students on my cash registers. And to insinuate that somebody who is under, that having cashiers under the age of 18 are going to sell cigarettes, you know, correlation does not equal causation. I think the seven people that are underage at the hub that would love to work on a cash register would take exception to the kind of the insinuations that have been made tonight. They're great people, and they want the opportunity to be able to serve people. You know, I also look at the principle of it. The state of North Dakota does not deem that you have to be 18 to sell cigarettes. Dickinson had the right and chose the right to make their own rule. If the state felt that it was that important, they would make everybody do it. They haven't. And, you know, again, I said last time I spoke here, being different is okay. Being different is, most of the time, I think it's good. In this case, I don't agree. It was mentioned earlier that New York City, biggest city in the country, doesn't allow you to sell cigarettes under 18. That's the same city that doesn't want a fountain pop bigger than 16 ounces old, so I'm not sure I would follow their example on a lot of stuff. But when it comes down to it, I'm not going to argue smoking. You know, the hub, we take responsible retailing very, very seriously. We have our own internal training program. It's an hour long. Everybody has to take it every six months and be certified to sell. We have scanners that scan IDs, reject a sale if it's a fake ID or if they're underage. We have our own internal policy with punishments for, and up determination if you fail, and rewards for those who pass. And first and foremost, we screen applicants. We want to hire the best of the best, so we hire upstanding young men and women. We hire on character and integrity, so we want to bring the right people in, and to say that changing this ordinance would lead to more tobacco sales. I can't speak for everybody else in this town. I do know that most of the convenience stores in town do usually have one person on staff at a time, and all of them that I spoke to said they wouldn't put somebody under 18 there anyway. If I had one person on staff, I wouldn't have an underage, underage 18 person, but we have multiple, and I like to mix it up, and I think that this restriction should be removed, and we should follow the rest of the state in North Dakota and change that to 16. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the council. Please excuse my attire, I just got off work. I'm the Assistant Manager at the Holiday Station. I agree with Jared. If we were able to take our young people and mold them and build their personable personalities to where, and I know I've seen several of you, when you walk in in the morning, what do you get? Good morning, how are you? How can I help you? This is how we want our next generation to be. This is how we want our next generation to evolve, to stop a high schooler from learning this ability, from learning how to handle a situation with a customer where, "I'm sorry, I can't sell this to you because you're underage. If you would like to speak to my manager, I can call him or her." This is how you mold a person, to be the best citizen, to be the best worker, to build their future, to enhance everything that America is about. Yes, there are underage smokers. As at the hub, Holiday also has the ability to take the ID and scan it. It will tell you two things. It's valid, and it's not expired. I also look at the picture and compare the picture with the face of the person offering me the ID. To be able to do that and train a person and mold them into a good individual who's able to interact with people, what better future are we looking at than what we have sitting in front of us right now? These are the people we want in our future. These are the people we want to mold to be able to do that. And to be able to do that, you have to get them at a young age and show them the proper way to do it. I had to take an 18-year-old and show her the value of a coin so she would not give five dimes instead of a quarter or 50 cents. We want them younger so we can teach them better. Any questions?
For the record, could you state your name for the clerk?
Lonnie Doppler.
Thank you. Any questions here?
One more thing. The underage smoking, I don't believe, has anything to do with what we're trying to do here as an underage person selling tobacco. Whether you're an underage smoker or not, if you are able to locate someone to bum a cigarette from an older person to buy for you, that's not going to change. The underage people are what we want to deal with as far as molding them into good citizens, learning to do what we do.
Thank you.
I did want to add one more thing that I failed to mention, probably the biggest thing that I wanted to bring up. You know, the focus here has been on, of course, the age, because that's what the ordinance is about, but, you know, should an ordinance move forward, as a retailer, I am completely okay with the idea of increasing, you know, you want to stop underage smoking? Let's increase the penalties, A, for underage users, B, for retailers who sell to underage people, including places like the hub, if we were to sell, we should get penalized, and we should get penalized big. That's just the way it should be, and I'm okay with that. And C, even those who attempt to purchase and are unsuccessful because they get carded, there should be some pretty big penalty for that, and, you know, we want to see underage smoking continue to go down because it's gone down quite a bit over the past decade, which is great. Let's focus on the penalties rather than the age of the sellers. Thank you.
Mr. Sheeler, I have a question for you. When you mentioned penalties, and we do have penalties in place for when those occurrences happen, and I'm just sure despite your best efforts, and you mentioned several of them to us, to make sure people don't sell to underage individuals, what is your penalty to an employee who may do that? Do they lose their job, or are there other ramifications?
Sure. So, the maximum penalty is termination, and a lot of that depends on prior record as well. The minimum penalty is a week off and having to pay on their own dime a professional tobacco training. Because like I said, we do our own internally. We have an online course, which is about an hour long, and they have to take a quiz and get certified, but in addition to that, we'd have a week-long suspension, and it's about, from my experience, about $400 to take a private class on your own. And I don't know, I'm not aware of any here, though I'm familiar with some in my former area of the Twin Cities, but they were both $400 bucks a pop. People would have to pay that on their own dime. And, not to mention, I could be wrong here, but most municipalities have civil penalties for people who commit that crime, because it is a crime, as it should be. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Jennifer Schaefer, again, just to let Mr. Sheeler know that we do offer tobacco training to retailers, and that is free of charge. So, that is open to all of the Dickinson businesses, and we offer that four times a year. And as we have shared with everyone, we do these trainings, and then we generally hold our compliance checks a couple days after that. So, just to let you know about that. Thank you.
Chief Dossinger, who's been pacing the floor back there, would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. When this ordinance change, I think, was back in 2005 or 2006, I believe, that the City Commission and the city was being very progressive and proactive in protecting our youth. Like Mr. Sheeler says, Dickinson's very unique, and that we do have a law that's in place to prevent somebody from the age, under the age of 16, to sell cigarettes, which is not in the North Dakota Century Code. You know, sometimes it's okay to be unique, and this is definitely one of those times. And there's a lot of issues facing today's youth, ranging from social media issues, drug-related issues, you know, any help that we can give somebody from preventing to make a difficult decision is something that we need to look at as far as the city and as a police department. You've heard some wonderful testimony today in opposition of the ordinance change, and the police department fully supports that testimony. The biggest challenge that we would face with this ordinance change would be the, in regards possession of the tobacco product. On one hand, we're going to say it's okay for that individual in the age of 16 to sell tobacco products and have it in their possession. As soon as they walk outside or walk outside that convenience store, or walk out from behind that counter, now I'd be in violation of a possession ordinance, which would be a $100 fine. As Mr. Sheeler says, he would be in support of changing the, increasing the fine. I would actually be against that. The reason why is if you increase the fine, which is $100, no, $100 fine right now, more than likely, they're going to look towards the parents to pay in that fine. Hopefully, at a $100 fine range of that, with staying that juvenile right now to pay that fine. If we increased it to $300 or $400 more, more than likely, they're going to be looking towards the parents to pay that fine for them. Do you have any questions?
Questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment? Anybody else? Okay, there's no one else, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, and we would expect that city staff would place this on the agenda at the next meeting, then for second reading and action at that time. Okay, thank you all for your participation. So, we will then return to the non- timetable agenda. We were on Item F reports. Mr. Kessel had just completed giving his reports. Were there comments or questions for him by commissioners? I did have one question going back to the bucket fill. The sequence of filling up the buckets that you presented, is that a different sequence from what exists in the law today?
President Johnson, no. The amounts have changed a little, but in terms of the sequence, no. At one point in time, there was an addition for K through 12 school funding that has been removed, which is, in my opinion, a smart removal. I can't see funding K through 12 with such a volatile tax. So, that was good news, but beyond that, no, this reverts back to then the original list, but it does change the amounts slightly.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Well, then, we have the Hiring Journal and Mrs. Nomenek.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. First on our list, we have Police Officer. Right now, we've got three openings. Two offers have been made, and they are in the background phase, and we are doing second interviews on the third position that we have opened right now. Communication Specialist, we just filled that. This person actually started today, so all those positions have been filled in Communications. Scale Attendant, we did have one opening for the Baylor Building, and that has recently been filled. We had two sanitation labor positions. One of them was filled, and we have one remaining open at this time. We had a Senior Sanitation Operator position open that was filled internally with one of our operators, which left an operator position open, and we just recently hired that operator position as well. Street Maintenance Operator, we had one opening. Those interviews took place today, so we'll see if we can get that filled today or soon. Chief Engineering Technician is a position that we've kind of had on hold for a while, and that remains on hold. Deputy City Administrator for Finance and Administrative Services, we have held the interviews for that, and offer has been made for that position. The Finance Department, we had an Accounting Position, Accountant Position, open. That has been filled, and that person is already with us. And we recently had an Accountant Technician Position open. Those interviews will take place tomorrow. Facility Operator, we had, just filled our last opening for that position. So those are all filled. Custodian, out at the Public Works Facility, was just filled. We'll have a custodian opening soon for our new Public Safety Center. The GIS Technician has been filled, and he has been working for us for a couple weeks now. The Engineering Project Manager is another position we put on hold, and that is still on hold at this time. Planning Director, we did make an offer on that. It was accepted, and we're looking at a first of the May hire date for that person. Safety Training Coordinator, we did put on hold as well, and that remains on hold. We are looking for a limited hour Library Assistant. And then we've got several seasonal positions that we've recently opened for the summer. So we've got buildings and sites, several positions there. I'd say five openings right now. Forestry Positions, Water Department, we're looking for some seasonal help. We're going to hire a code enforcement person this year to go around and write some letters on code enforcement. And then the museum is looking for some tour guides.
The Deputy City Administrator, was that position accepted?
It was. We have a next Monday start date, April 27.
Well, it sounds to me like you have a few more successes than we've heard over the last couple of years. It's been a really difficult labor market for you.
Yes, yeah. It's, they really, we are getting some good applications in right now. I think Police Department still remains difficult for us, for the police officers. We're getting less for that position. The other ones, we are getting good applicants. Right now, we've got a scale, or we have a Records Clerk at the Police Department that just recently put in a resignation, so we'll be looking for that. And then we'll be opening a wastewater treatment plant operator soon. But we've had good luck getting applications. Street Operator, we had a really nice number of applicants, good qualified applicants.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
I'd just like to add that obviously, City Attorney and City Engineer are two positions that we'd also like to hire, and those processes will start very, very soon as well.
All right.
Thank you.
So, we'll go to the Municipal Prosecutor's Report. And Beth Ebert from Macoffe Kellogg is here to present that.
Good afternoon, President Johnson, Commissioners. I did prepare a short presentation for your viewing here. Thank you for hearing me this afternoon. First and foremost, the transition went smoothly, and we're off to a great start with the prosecution contract. I have to give many thanks to the municipal clerks, municipal judge, attorney calling, as well as Dickinson Police Department. They have made this transition close to seamless. A few stats or information for you here. Since the contract was taken over January 1st, we've opened approximately 338 files. Now, that includes all criminal cases. That includes contested traffic citations, so cases that are disputed and are plead not guilty, and infractions, that people plead not guilty and wish to contest it. Anything before that, for example, parking tickets that are just paid out the gate, or infractions that are the fines paid and you don't need a court appearances, I don't see those. Those are paid and done with. Active files, as currently, we have about 339 active files. That number at the bottom there, that includes files that have been transferred to District Court, as well as some outstanding warrant cases. For example, if the defendant goes missing, that case just sits open for, until we find them again, until they get arrested on their bench warrant again. So these are the amount of citations issued. And I have to admit that with the information that I provided, I'm a little confused about how to read it. There's ticket, a ticket count and fees collected that are provided to me by, I believe, the municipal courts. And from what do you see there? That is for traffic citations and criminal court actions for the last three years. I also see on the information that there's parking tickets issued. That is not included in that graph. What we're looking at right now for the 2015, January, between traffic citations and criminal complaints, we're looking at 301 for January, 282 for February, and 301 for March. And you can see how that reflects against the previous two years. 2015 being in red on the right there. Fines and fees collected for those two categories. And again, I think my misinterpretation of the table I received is going to be reflected slightly in this one. But you can see there, 2015's in blue. And the numbers we're looking at there in January, approximately $36,204. In February, that's $31,025. And in March is approximately $29,291.50. Just an overview of my involvement with the courts. Monday, District Courts, those are failure to comply, so that means judgment is already entered, and they have to pay fines, or they have to obtain an alcohol evaluation with a certain amount of time. If they fail to comply with their judgment, that's when they pop up back up for a hearing. They're just, you know, their opportunity to say, why have you not complied, and what should we do about it? Tuesday is pretrial hearings. So when the case is open and active, we have the initial appearance, and then we set for a pretrial. As you know, they have the option to transfer it up to District Court, and Tuesday's afternoon is when we go to District Court for the pretrial hearing. Before that date, I am required as prosecutor to present all discovery requested, as well as a plea agreement to try to get the matter resolved. And then Thursday morning is pretrial hearings here in municipal courts, arraignments, and ledger card hearings when necessary. We got off to a very active start this year, and I was very excited about it. I've already, we've had a jury trial that resulted in aggravated DUI conviction. So an aggravated DUI is considered when you hit the .16 AC level. So .18 hits your DUI, .16 hits your aggravated level. This was an EC of .203. The officer in that matter was Thomas Gross, and he served as a great witness. We also had a bench trial, and that was on a care required citation. That conviction was, we gained a conviction, and Officer Matthew Hanson, I believe it was, was also a great witness. We do currently have a jury trial scheduled for the 29th, and that as well is for an aggravated DUI. Cases are still being remanded to City Court as standard procedure. Just an extra component of this remand is that the defendant waives his right or her right to a jury trial. The whole purpose of getting to transfer it up is the notion or the difference between getting a bench trial in front of Judge Keel, or getting a jury trial of six or 12 juror members. And like I said, we're off to an exciting start. On December 31st of 2014, the city was served with a notice of appeal to the Supreme Court of North Dakota. Initially, appeals from the municipal court level have to be appealed to the District Court. If they want to appeal that one, then it goes to the Supreme Court. In this case, Vishimo Eteneh. The issue in that matter is that he is alleging that his Sixth Amendment right, his right to counsel, was violated. The initial charge in this matter was a simple assault domestic violence charge. He decided to waive his right to court upon a counsel and decided to represent himself. A year later, we find out that his, or he's alleging that his conviction or his admission to that crime is triggering some deportation issues. And so now he's saying that because of the threat of deportation, he couldn't have waived his right, therefore his Sixth Amendment right was violated. Briefs have been fully submitted in that, and the oral arguments are scheduled for May 8th at 10:00 in the morning Central Time. And that is my short summary for you. I can be happy to answer any questions you may have. Like I said, many thanks to all parties involved with making that transition so smoothly.
I have a question. The penalties or fines for traffic violations are running less than a year ago, it appeared, and that from January, February, and March, they're on the decline. I guess, you know, the assumption would be that with the downturn in oil prices, perhaps, there's less traffic activity in town. Would, in your opinion, would that be what's causing the lower fines? Or is it just tough prosecution? I suppose there are other alternatives to them.
I would say that the criminal cases over the last three years for these months have ranged somewhat the same. You saw the hike in 2014, but there's also a huge influx in those cases. We have unfortunately been seeing a lot of defendants that are disappearing on us. So we have a lot of cases open, but they're going to sit open because defendants won't show up for court. Another potential effect could be that our driving under suspension citations. They have a 60-day window to reinstate driver's license, and that case can get dismissed. And so on the policy side of saying, you do what you need to do to get that reinstated, and this will go away. You know, on the basis that it's better for them to have their, an actual license than to be convicted of a misdemeanor. But we are seeing some absences, and we are seeing some defendants leaving.
So, the assumption would be they've had a traffic violation and probably have just left town, maybe left state, left the state?
Well, a traffic violation, if they don't show up their bond to fight that ticket, it's going to be forfeited automatically. What we're talking would be, like a, be a misdemeanor, say, a driving under suspension, a DUI, or a simple assault are typical cases, where they just pick up and leave town.
But that remains as an open item, and if they ever show up again?
Correct.
Then they have probably bigger issues at that point, but...
And there's many ways that can happen, whether it's they get picked up on the bench warrant in town. I don't believe the city of Dickinson extradites anybody for these crimes. So if they were to get picked up in Louisiana, they're not going to be sent up here to deal with the misdemeanor.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for appearing. Well, we'll move on then to Public Safety, and Fire Department is going to present their annual reports. Chief Seabuck.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. This evening, we will do a recap of our annual report. This will not be a page-by-page PowerPoint presentation of what's been given to you in a hard copy format, however. I do want to draw your attention to the cover of the annual report. That picture is from the Crewed by Rail Training Grounds in Pueblo, Colorado. As you look at that scene, the firefighter to your left is a Dickinson City Fire Department member. We were able to send five of our people to that training last year, and we hope to send some more again this year. 2014 saw one of the highest, or the highest, number of incidents that we've experienced so far. 559 total incidents, as you can see by the graph. False calls made up 33% of those, but the false calls actually were 7% lower than last year, or than 2013, I should say. Total call volume, however, did increase by 20%. In 2014, we added three additional full-time firefighters, bringing our total number of full-time firefighters to four, total number of full-time staff to nine. With that move, we also implemented shift work, putting one firefighter on duty at least around the clock out of the central fire station. And even though we were only dealing with one firefighter on duty in a full-time capacity, the officers in charge recognized that position as a real asset to their response, as did the other responding volunteers. And again, in 2015 and in future years, we hope to build on that to increase the potential for a timely response.
Chief Seabuck?
Yes, sir.
If I could interrupt you. The false alarms, how many of those are intentional, malicious?
I don't have that break, let's see, that'd be page four in your report. Of those that are false calls, I'm afraid I don't have the actual number that is malicious false calls. A percentage is, I don't have that exact percentage available to me.
But some are.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Some are malicious false calls, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Of the 559 incidents reported, 106 of those were fire calls, with 54% of those fire calls being related to cooking. The other categories are, as you see, actual structure fire or unoccupied structure, trash, mobile home, vehicle fire, grass or brush fires, outside equipment. These 106 incident, or these 106 reports were actual fires now, not other incidents such as CO calls, which we'll get into in a little bit. Response time is something you've heard me talk about before, something we track closely, because it is one of the measures for our level of service to the community. And in 75% of the 559 incidents in 2014, we had somebody on scene in nine minutes or less. A lot of times, that was a single individual, however, that was our officer in charge. Minimum recommended staffing levels and timeframes that that should happen in were not met. The chart represents seven general alarm structure fires in 2014. And in those seven general alarm structure fires, we can say that we did meet the minimum manpower staffing of 15 firefighters on scene within nine minutes of receiving the call one time. You see, that's the, where that bar is, where the graph is just touching that dark bar. That's the one time we did meet that. But in six out of seven times, we did not meet that requirement. $2014 loss, it's a little over $4 million. We had some expensive fires. We had some large dollar losses in 14. I'll get into those a little bit more in the next slide. In comparison, what you see in 2007, East End Auto in the Old Elks Building. Of course, property values impact this also. In 2012, we had the J.C. Penney Fire. 2013, 111 incidents in one and two family dwellings. Significant incidents in 2014, of course, the Bogies Restaurant Fire, Trinity High School Fire, and 133 incidents in one and two family dwellings with an estimated $588,500 loss. Now, those 133 incidents encompasses the fires, but it also encompasses other incidents in one and two family dwellings, such as the carbon monoxide calls and things like that. That's, of those 106 fire calls, that's in that 133 incidents, if you follow what I'm getting at there. Our cost per capita, however, still remains reasonable for a community that's growing as rapidly as we are. Again, we do our best guess in trying to bring this figure to you. You see, it is increasing over the years, but $28.70 per capita is about where we're at in our somewhat unscientific method of trying to compute that for you. And the insurance premium tax rebate that figures into this equation, which was received in 2014, was $173,249. That money is being directed towards the lease payment on the new fire apparatus that we purchased in 2014. In 2014, Dickinson firefighters invested a cumulative 2,872 hours in training. Various categories are listed on the graph. We sent firefighters, members of our department, to the Hazardous Materials Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. We sent firefighters to the Crewed by Rail Training in Pueblo, Colorado. Members of our department were able to attend class at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, as well as attending the State Fire School held in Minot. And in addition to that, the regional schools that we've offered at our training site, which the photo in the upper left-hand corner is a photo of our Oilfield Emergencies Training Site, the training class that we offer through a partnership... site, that training class that we offer through a partnership with the North Dakota Firefighters Association. We offer at least one of those every year. We've been asked to try and offer two. We quite frankly can't find the time to do that. We would do that if we could, but right now, we're fortunate to find the time to offer the one that we do. Our fire inspections in 2014 increased by approximately 10%. We had a total number of 2,358 inspections in the categories of routine inspections, follow-ups generated by those routines, acceptance tests of fire alarm and fire suppression systems, construction inspections, final inspections, complaints, childcare, and walkthroughs. Walkthrough may be a craft fair in a mall, where it's not so much as an individual inspection as a walkthrough of the entire area. An event at the Park and Rec Building, as an example, might be a walkthrough inspection. Still an inspection, but more of a general type of inspection versus a specific business. Even though our number has increased, and it's increased in a nice manner, a 10% increase of overall inspections, so has the number of occupancies that we are expected to inspect. So we are still kept at approximately 24 months between inspections that we would like to see have a 12-month timeframe instead. We continue to prioritize the inspections to make sure that the inspections that need to be looked at, at the very least once a year, are always picked up in that timeframe. We also continue to pursue efficiency. All of our inspectors are in the field now with a tablet where they have access not only to the fire codes, but to the past histories of the occupancies that they're working on that day. That, when they get back, that tablet syncs to our database, and all of the inspection information that's been inputted is automatically updated into that database. They print out whatever forms they need in the field. So we're pursuing efficiency through that manner. And fire prevention, of course, is something that Dickinson Fire Department practices year-round and a message we bring to the community year-round, but especially during National Fire Prevention Week, which is in October. Again, last year, we had over 1,240 children participate in activities hosted at the Fire Department, age-specific lessons presented to the students, age-specific lessons that are also taken to some of the locations. And that's in addition to fire drills that are conducted at area businesses in addition to the area schools, and demonstrations, fire extinguisher training conducted at various businesses. That all takes place throughout the year, and of course, there's a heavy emphasis on it during this timeframe. You heard mention of a truck purchased in 2014. That would be Unit 505 that you see in this graph. That is our truck lifespan. Fire, the apparatus that we surplused out was a 1,000-gallon-per-minute pumper that we did sell for $5,500 to a small community in Washington State. And we've purchased the, our new apparatus, which has a pumping capacity of 1,500 gallons per minute, so we've increased our pumping capacity. Also has a 75-foot aerial on it, an aluminum ladder on it. For a community our size, with the type of construction we're experiencing, we have two apparatus with aerial ladder capabilities. That is tremendous. That is something that we and that you, Commissioners, and that the community can be extremely proud of. That is a tremendous resource for the community and for the type of billing that we see happening. In 2014, we received $49,539 in grant monies, which went to purchase a structural collapse trailer and the necessary equipment to support that function. That's part of the regional response partnership we have with the state of North Dakota in hazardous materials response and in structural and technical rescue response. We also received donations, which totaled, I believe, $12,000. $2,000 of that went to help pay for the LED lighting. That was an additional item on that new aerial truck that we purchased. The other $4,000 of the total $6,000 cost was monies that the volunteer firefighters raised and put towards that option. $10,000 was received from Oxy Corporation, well, the Wildlife Foundation and Marathon Oil, excuse me. Oxy Corporation donated $2,000, which went toward the lights on the ladder. Marathon donated $5,000. The Wildlife Foundation, otherwise known as the South Side Saloon, or working through the South Side Saloon, I should say it that way, went towards purchasing us, purchasing us new structural firefighting boots, $10,000 purchase. Public relations for our department in 2014 included our members and apparatus being president, being present at the Trinity Band-Aid Event, taking part in and helping coordinate our spring cleanup event. Again, we do the July 4th Pancake fundraiser for the senior citizens. That'll be happening again this year. All proceeds after expenses go to the Senior Citizens Center. We took part in the Muscular Dystrophy Association's Fill the Boot Campaign, and we will be taking part in that again this year, I hope. Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. Rumor has it that the Fire Department won again. Again, that's something the Fire Department and the Police Department look forward to and take part in on a yearly basis. And our department took part in the move of the hospital from its old location to its new location. In closing, I'd like to mention, as I've already mentioned in this slide, mentioned spring cleanup. Again, spring cleanup will be happening for the city of Dickinson. We had a very successful organizational meeting last week, Wednesday. We had more attendees than we have ever had, a strong presence from the citizens and from the business community. And we look forward to a very successful year. As a matter of fact, this Sunday, this past Sunday, in the wind that we had, there were people out cleaning 10th Avenue East and 21st Street East. And I ask you to take a drive down those streets because there's a noticeable difference. Noticeable, they fought the wind, and they did an excellent job. We've got great cooperation from the other city departments. The Public Works Departments and the Baylor Building are doing a great job in working with us through this. Spring cleanup this year will start Friday, May 1st, and will conclude May 16th. Additional information on that will be coming out in newspaper articles, in radio spots, and available on the Fire Department website. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Chief Seabuck, are there any comments or questions for the chief?
Regarding the upcoming spring cleanup, did you get good participation from home builders and contractors?
We had, we had, we had a couple of companies represented, which compared to last year is 100% better. There was, the entire meeting was, we almost had a full house here. It was just amazing to see. So that, I would, they were in the audience. How many of them? But they were in the audience, definitely.
You know, residential construction by its nature causes some problems that way.
Yes.
And I think if there's a way we can evoke more participation, it'd be great.
We'll work on that.
Anything else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear Police Department's annual report, Chief Dossinger.
Good evening again, Mr. President, members of the Commission. At a recent prior commission meeting, I presented you with the 2014 yearly report from the Dickinson Police Department. Tonight, I want to highlight a few of the, a few of the items in that booklet, and if you have any questions, that's inclusion of this report. Feel free to ask me, or Captain Siani, or Captain Wilkie regarding those items. First item I'm going to discuss would be the 2014 Police Department budget. As you can see, the two biggest expenses to the Police Department, obviously, is salaries and benefits. The 2014 budget for the Police Department was a little over $4.8 million for 2014, which is about 32% of the total city budget. 2014 was a very successful year for the Dickinson Police Department as far as grant, receiving grants. One of the biggest ones is one of the Oil Impact Grants, which was in excess of $500,000. That's very important because that made it possible for us to receive the Tate Simulcast Radio System, which is going to be going online here by the end of the month. As our city grew in miles, so to speak, and in distance, we were having issues with our officers communicating with their portable radios in certain areas of town. What the Simulcast system does, it takes out that inability for our officers to have difficulty communicating within certain structures, particularly as our town had grew towards the west and also to the north. It eliminates that difficulty for our officers to communicate with our dispatch center or to other officers in their vehicles with the Simulcast system. So this was very important as far as a safety standpoint for our officers and our community. Some of the other grants that we received is also the Stop Domestic Violence Grant, which we were able to purchase the digital cameras to put in our squad cars when we respond to assaults, domestic violence calls. We were able to utilize them in taking photos of the incidents. Training's very important for our department. Each officer is required to obtain 60 hours of training every three years. In 2014, we spent a little over $30,000, $32,000 sending officers to the trainings held outside the city of Dickinson. These trainings do not include any of the in-house training that we have within our department, or our trainings hosted in the city of Dickinson. There is 214 training occasions that officers attended, 60 different seminars and trainings. A picture, there are two of our canines with their handlers, Officer Jaden Peters with his canine Nico, and Sergeant Corey Lee with his canine Gambit. Those are two of three canines within our region right now. The only other canine in our region is his handlers with the North Dakota Highway Patrol. These two teams are responsible for over 172 narcotics deaths in 2014 and over 29 arrests. They also attended 36 public relation events and 22 patrol-related events, which includes high-risk business, high-risk building searches. They've also attended several schools within, not only within the city of Dickinson, but they've done searches in the city of New England and the city of Belfield as well. So these are two very active canines. I mean, 2014 was a very active year for the Southwest Narcotics Task Force. As you do, as you know, we do have one officer that is part of that team. They took over a little over 27 pounds of marijuana off the streets of Dickinson and in our region. Just kind of talk a little bit as far as what we've seen so far for the first quarter of 2015. We've seen a dramatic increase in the amount of narcotics within our city. Within that first quarter, we've actually exceeded all of last year's totals in drug seizures. They seized a little over $1.4 million worth of narcotics in 2014, $45,000 in cash, and $9,700 worth of firearms in drug-related cases, along with $6,000 worth of vehicles. Here's a picture of our, one of our missions for our tactical team. This mission was actually based on the city of Belfield. At a recent SOC meeting, which was held in 2014, our boundaries, which is actually our responsibilities for our tactical team, has actually expanded. We now have the responsibility of the county of McKenzie County, which also encompasses the city of Watford City. We also received our command vehicle in 2014, which right now is equipped with three radio and computer terminals. We were able to utilize this in a recent training mission with the North Dakota National Guard for a hazardous materials incident, which they hosted over by the Dickinson Armory. This would be a very valuable tool, not only for the Police Department, but other law enforcement and fire departments in our region. We had a total of 11 call-outs in 2014 for our tactical team. Three of those were outside the city limits. 2014 was also a great, a great win for our community, and we were able to have the grand opening and the opening of our new animal shelter, 2014. And right now, we have two full-time, two full-time employees that are responsible for maintaining animal control in the city of Dickinson and also managing our animal shelter. And we have several dedicated volunteers that are assisting them with that process. 2014, we had a total of 1,394 property accidents. We had 71 injury accidents, and unfortunately, we had one fatality in 2014. We had a total of 3,248 citations issued, 2,858 warnings, and 1,167 parking tickets issued. In 2013, we had a total of 1,284 traffic accidents. So our traffic accidents were up slightly in 2014 compared to the year before. Major crimes, fairly consistent to what we've seen in 2013. We've seen an increase in sexual assaults, a decrease in aggravated assaults. I've seen a slight increase in thefts, burglaries. And we did have one murder in 2014. Total calls for service, we ended the year with 27,330 calls for service compared to 25,310 in 2013. Arrest, they're fairly consistent to what we've seen in 2013. We used the year 2009 as the baseline year. We use that year just prior to what we see in the enormous amount of increase prior to our oil, oil boom activity. So we use 2009 as a baseline year. 2014 in July, we also inherited the Regional Community Service Program. In that timeframe from July to the end of the year, we had a total of 16 adults and 11 juveniles that participated in that program with 260 hours of community service that was managed by our department. We had two staff members that had retired. Senior Patrolman Greg Barrows retired in 2014, as long, as well as Lieutenant William Leach. We also had the return of Officer Tyrell Hanson. Officer Hanson had served a tour of Afghanistan and returned to us in 2014, and we were very glad to get him back as a member of our team. Are there any questions?
Chief, you used 2009 as a baseline. Do you, can you recall approximately what your, the department's staffing levels were in 2009 and what they are today?
We definitely have more staff on hand today than we did in 2009. Right now, we have, we're slotted to have 40 sworn members of our department. I believe in 2009, we were around 36 to 37 sworn members at that time.
And then the, the animal shelter, can you just give us some comments on what impact that's having? How, you know, is it working out well or not?
You know, so far, it's had a huge impact on the community. We've tried doing different things in there and changing it more from a pound to more of an animal shelter. We're doing vaccination clinics. We had our first vaccination clinic there within the last couple of weeks, and we're getting a tremendous output from volunteers that want to participate in that shelter. We're also seeing a huge increase in the number of animals that are being brought to us as well. Particularly, it appears that there is some large amounts of people that are either, you know, they like to adopt an animal or have an animal for a short period of time. For whatever reason, they're moving to a new apartment or a new home. Oftentimes, these animals get left outside or get dumped somewhere. We are seeing a huge increase in the number of animals that we are having to deal with at our shelter.
Have there been days when you've had it full?
There have been days where we have been full, correct?
I have one question, Mr. President. Does Williston or is it Ward County around? Williston, am I correct?
Williams.
Okay. Well, whatever the surrounding county, do they not have a tactical team?
That is correct. They have been in the process. They have talked the last couple of years about establishing a team before, between the city of Williston and Williams County. Currently, there is a tactical team based on the city of Minot, which, which the city of Williston utilizes.
I was just going to say, because the response time's got to be, to get the
Correct.
To Watford City's got to be pretty extreme.
Correct.
For us to be covering it.
Correct.
Can you comment anymore about the big jump in drug seizures first quarter? The reasons?
The reasons?
You know, I guess to put the hammer on the head as far as why we're actually seeing the huge increase in drug activity in our community, I don't know. I do know that the drug task force is a lot, a large amount of intel that they receive on a weekly basis that they sort through. You know, it comes down to supply and demand and economy. Right now, the price of selling methamphetamines and other heroin and other products in our community is much more lucrative than other parts of the country. So it's, a lot of that is economical-based.
Thank you. Mr. Castle?
Chief, would you mind making some comments related to human trafficking, the drug trafficking as it relates to gang activity in our community?
You know, certainly in 2014 was a challenging year for us as far as dealing as a public safety agency, as a law enforcement agency. We've seen certain things as, you know, our first real gang-related activities in our community, which is directly related to drug trafficking. And we've done a pretty good job in trying to eliminate that as much as possible as far as making several arrests. And we have kind of since pushed the majority of that group outside our community to other states. As far as human trafficking, we definitely are, try to be proactive. We have an individual that works, does ICAC and is very active with ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. He spends a lot of time on the computer, trying to lure in some of these predators, and has been very successful. He's had arrests as far as South Korea and has touched numerous states in our country. Human trafficking is definitely a huge problem in our entire country, and North Dakota is not, is not out of that realms either.
All right, thank you.
If I may, I'd like to introduce one individual to you. I've had the privilege of having an administrative intern for the last couple of months from Dickinson State University, Jeremy Samuelson. I'd like to introduce him to the commission, if I may.
Certainly.
Hi, thanks for having me. As Chief said, my name is Jeremy Samuelson, and I'm in my fifth and final year at DSU. I am studying composite social science with emphasis on criminal justice and am looking at going into a career with law enforcement or with juvenile delinquency. So I've had a good time at the police department. I appreciate everything you've done for me, and just thanks for having me here tonight.
You're welcome. Where are you from, Jeremy?
I'm from Faith, South Dakota. And if you guys don't know where that's at, if you know where Lemon's at, it's about 60 miles south of there, so.
All right. And have you spent your entire five years at Dickinson State now?
Yep. I've gone to school five years there, and I've played basketball there five years also. That's what brought me up here.
Thank you for serving with the police department.
Thank them for having me.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to engineering, and item A is the Westgate Special Assessment District, and City Engineer Kubus will introduce that item.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioners. I do have a map I'll put up on the screen behind us. I don't know if I'll dim the lights here, but this is a map of our assessment district. Before you today is a resolution that would create a special assessment district for the area outlined in red. The project would complete the municipal infrastructure required by those properties in the Northland First Edition and the Westgate Industrial Acres subdivision, as shown on that map. The project is located, as you can see, of course, around Dickinson Ready Mix. There are a couple other properties that are not owned by Dickinson Ready Mix or subsidiary companies. The city has developed a preliminary engineering report, which was in your packet, the associated cost estimates for the work, and this improvement district as required by Chapter 40-22 of the North Dakota Century Code. Tonight, if there were passage of the resolution, this would begin the 30-day protest period, wherein the property owners could bar the assessment district with the majority of the area protesting the improvements. City staff has reviewed the engineering report. This was a project we had brought forth last year as a necessary project of a lot of activity in the area. This would reduce a lot of the dust that we're getting from the heavy traffic in that area, and the engineering department recommends approval of this special improvement district. With that, I'd open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Comments or questions for the city engineer? All right, well, if there's no comments or questions, this is a resolution, and I think it's 16-2015. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
I'll move for adoption of 16-2015.
Second?
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else from engineering?
Not at this time.
All right. We'll move to Public Works, and Public Works Director Gary Zeroff has a report on 40th Street.
President Johnson, Commissioner, I just have a quick update on 40th Street. 40th Street's been a very difficult street for the city of Dickinson Engineering Department and Public Works. We've spent, we've tried to keep that street maintained and passable, and recently even closed portion of 40th Street. As you're aware, last fall, there were water and sewer and some infrastructure put in that street, and this winter and spring, we have exhausted our concrete millings pile, our concrete end millings piles on that street, and spent tens of thousands of dollars to try to keep that maintained. I guess today I want some good news. Today, we had a pre-job or pre-con on 40th Street, and Thursday morning, they're going to start construction on 40th. So that's a quick update I wanted to give you on 40th Street.
Well, that's great. If they start Thursday, what's kind of the expected period of construction on this?
I believe final is November, if I'm correct, November, this week.
All summer, huh?
Yes.
Okay, and most of the fall. All right.
That's all I have for an update, unless you have any other questions about street maintenance or anything else from Public Works.
I have noticed that some of the potholes have started to work on them, so apparently we've had some warm enough days where we've been able to do some work there.
We're trying to catch up on the potholes and sweeping. There's numerous blowouts in the streets, and so we're trying to dig them out, replace the base, and hopefully there'll be some asphalt to pave in a week or so that we can patch some of those streets. Also, in our Mill and Overlay project, we have some discretionary funds we're going to use for some additional areas to try to catch up on some of the streets. And we're going to continue to sweep. We've been sweeping Friday and Saturdays, and also hopefully later this week, we'll get some additional sweeping done on the Chipsville project that was done last year.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stein.
Mrs. Zerf, can you just give a quick update on 15th Street West? And then we talked about it earlier, maybe an update for the public?
15th Street, that is west, that's where the Lift Station 12 project was or is continuing. The plan is to have it paved by next week. They had hoped to get it ready this week, and they are going to, they have some concrete curb and gutter to do, and get it prepped this week, and I just talked to Northern, and hopefully next week, they'll get the plan up and running, and he assured me that would be one of the first areas that would get paved in the city. Thank you.
So we're not too far away of the weather quality?
Hold on for another week or so, and weather permitting, we'll have that street paved. We will be closing it during that portion of getting it prepped to pave. They looked at, we looked at trying to keep it open and do one side at a time, but it looked like it would be, you know, seven to 10 days, almost two weeks, by doing it half at a time. They assured us that if they could close it, they could get it done in a week, so we went that direction.
Another question. Have you started to look at what our likely water storage situation will be this year? I know with the new water tank and the finished water pumps, as we discussed last year, we're not expecting those really to come online until probably early fall. Last year, we had a wet summer. This year, we're off to a dry start. I'm anticipating that you're likely to be talking to us about water restrictions as we start getting into the warmer portion of the summer if it remains a dry start here.
I've talked with water utilities, we've discussed it quite a few times about what kind of water conservation measures we want, we think we need, and the city wants to have. I think I'll put some of those together, and I know it's coming up quick, but I would maybe like your input and some other input on how we want to do that. There's, you know, basic, first of all, basic restrictions would be, you know, selling the water for frac water or hydrants, maybe reducing some of the watering in the parks and those, and limiting watering on certain days would probably be some of the options like last year we looked at. I think last year it went fairly well. I don't think a lot of people followed what we wanted to do, but it did slow down the water usage, but we will probably have to look at water conservation this year, and I would like to get that information out as soon as we can.
Last year was a very wet summer. If we just have a normal summer, I would anticipate that we would have some water issues. And if it's a hot, dry summer, I think we'd certainly have them.
If you have any comments, you know, we've looked at every other days, even addresses, of course, limiting outside use of water for other than lawns. But if you have any comments, then let me know, and we'll put some together.
Anything else for Public Works Director? All right, and then we'll go to planning and Director Millstone.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission members. I'm pleased to give the first quarter report for building permits for this year. What I'd like to do is I'll probably rifle through these, then I'll give a little summary and prognosis of where I think we're going to go from here. So the first slide is the commercial structures. I guess I have to do that, huh? We're down 33%. This is quarter to quarter, so first quarter of last year, first quarter of this year. Next slide, public structures, we're down 100%. We haven't permitted any public structures yet this year. Then we're looking at single-family structures. We're only down 4%, which is actually just one less single-family structure than last year. Multifamily and row housing, we're down again 100% because we haven't permitted any this year. Total permits issued, we're down about 24%. We had 41 last year, and at this point, we're at 31. So our total multifamily housing units, again, are down 100% because we haven't permitted any yet this year. And I think this is my last slide. New building permit values, actually down 83%. Those are the costs associated with those new permits, and I guess I misspoke here. Miscellaneous permits, we're down 33%. And this is the final slide. The fees remitted to the city, we're down also 33%. So now I'd like to summarize, I think, what we've seen and where we're going from here. First of all, I'd like to state that everything's not terrible. What wasn't shown in the slides is that for the ANA building permits, which are alterations and additions, they're pretty much up across the board, whether it be for number of permits and for dollar value of those permits, anywhere from 15% to 80%. So while we're not giving out as many permits, we are taking in more money and giving out more ANA permits. So looking at the slides, the first quarter, I first, I'm an optimist at heart, and I looked at those and I said, okay, let's not jump to any conclusions because it's only the first quarter. Then I took two actions which made me change my thinking. The first action I took was, I actually took a sneak peek at where we stand today, April 20th, and all of those values that you've seen on the board have, the gap has increased to the negative. So it's all been greater or less numbers of permits than given out at this time last year. The second thing I did is I sat down with the building official, and we looked at all the available lots and all the opportunities and what made sense that they'd come in for building permits this year. At that point, I'll go through item by item. Commercial structures, at the end of last year, we had 33. Currently, we have four, and maybe Mr. Kubus can help out with this because he's done more research on the commercial side, but as far as I can tell, you know, I don't think we're ever going to get to that 33 this year. The main players that I can think about is the Market Center at Westridge, which is going to add just a couple, and the Oliver Commons, which again are going to add a couple. I don't know, Craig, if you want to jump in, does that seem reasonable? Okay, so the next thing I looked at is public structures. We had five building permits for public structures all of last year. Now, we may match that this year. Ones that come to mind right away are Lift Station 14, Lift Station 5, the Water Booster Station on State Avenue, possibly the reuse station. I'm not sure if we'll need a permit for that. And then Gary, excuse me, Mr. Zeroff, might have some other ones that I can't think of, but those are the ones on the top of my head. Single-family structures, this is quite interesting, I think. If we build on all the available infield lots, as well as all of the current lots that we expect to be ready for building permits this year, we will surpass the 271 we had last year, but I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to get all of those built this year. And then the final one I want to talk about is the multifamily housing and row housing. Myself and the building official could only come up with one that we expect to be permitted this year, and that's the Northern Place Affordable Housing Project. So with that, I'm going to put my neck out on this, but it looks, and again, this will be refined as we go through each quarter, but in my opinion, it looks like we're going to be down permit-wise about 33% this year than last year. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any comments or questions for Director Millstone?
President Johnson?
I just have one. You compared to last year, but how does it relate to previous years? Did you kind of glance back?
Well, I knew, that's a good question, Mr. Zeroff. Last year was a banner year, so even if we're, and I didn't look at prior years, but I do know that last year was higher than, I think, any year but 2012. So even if we do come down by 33% this year, I mean, last year, our total housing units were 559, which is pretty phenomenal. The permits issued were 319. So we had, you know, a phenomenal year last year. So we had, you know, a phenomenal year last year, and my feelings are, even if we're down 33 percent, I still think we're doing a lot of work out there.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Anything by commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
My name is Jerry Vance, and I live at 325 A Street Southeast here in Dickinson. Mr. President, commissioners, gentlemen, I'd like to kind of bring up a couple of issues that we have on A Street Southeast on the south side of town. With the truck route and the stuff that we're enduring, if there's the speeds, noise, motorcycles, ATVs, and the amount of dirt that's blowing around the neighborhood. And basically, I want to say this, we fear for our safety of ourself, our neighbors, our families, and our kids for what's going on down there. The speeds, if you look at one of the reports that I had from the police department a few years ago, we had 14,057 vehicles in a two-week period that came by our resident. And 1,006 of those were speeding, which is 77 percent. And things have not gotten better since that happened. The highest speed was 83 mile an hour. You know, some of the stuff off the noise portion of it, if you look at the North Coast Entry Code, it says that, I'll make some of this a little shorter than the reading, the full amount of it, but if someone is unlawfully doing an act that annoys, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, and safety of others, defends a decency in any way renders other persons insecure of life and use of property. That's from the North Coast Entry Code. Like I said, some of the stuff that we have down there, the numerous trucks that are running with straight pipes, the noise that we're enduring with it, the exhaust of some of the vehicles, the four-wheel-drive pickups, diesel pickups, the motorcycles that are ripping up and down the streets at excessive speeds, the noise from them, four-wheelers that are actually driving up and down the streets that should not be there, they're up and down sidewalks also beside the streets, down the parking lanes, the snowmobiles, four-wheelers. And this has been a thing that's been going on for a couple of years. This has been, we brought this to your attention well over two years ago. I've got emails, phone calls, records of some of that stuff. So this is not just a, you know, one-time deal that's happening down there. But the conditions of the road from the traffic that we've got there, deterioration of the streets that we've got. In my house, for example, I've got three cracks in the sidewalk that go through the sidewalk, through the curb, directly across the street. You know, so my house shakes with these trucks coming by. I mean, the china and the dishes in the cupboard actually rattle. I sit on my chair in the living room, lay in my bed, and when these trucks come by, they shake. I mean, it's actually the movement of the house. So who's going to be responsible for that? Is it going to be the city if we have problems with our foundations? You know, it's destroying the quality of life in our neighborhood. And this was just not me. I'm representing a bunch of the neighbors that were not able to come here too. It's the same thing up and down the streets. I've got a few of the neighbors who are here with me, and I think they would concur with what I'm telling you. You know, so if you look at some of that, basically, the decibels that the city has put in the ordinances, you know, it makes reference from 7 to 11, that we're looking at 53 and 50 decibels for noise, and then from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, they're looking at 50. You know, the table two in that, in the ordinances also make reference about 88 for trucks and 80 on other vehicles. We're in excess of that numerous times throughout the course of the day, at night. 3:30 is the time I got woke up last night from one of the trucks, and it happened about four or five times from the excessive noise of these trucks. You know, if you look at the ordinance under the 24 tables, we're tested some of this stuff. It talks about, in Dickinson's codes, it talks about the intensity, whether it be unusual, unnatural, the proximity to sleeping quarters. I wonder if that references our houses about the proximity to that, you know, when you're 30 feet from the street, the noise that's there. The nature of the zoning, the area which the noise comes from, the density of the inhabitation of the area which the noise emits, the time of day of night, the duration of the noise, whether it's recurrent, intermittent, or constant, and it pretty much falls into all three of those categories. That noise was produced by commercial or non-commercial that we're getting from that. So even the codes of the city make reference to some of that. But the compression brakes, we've been asking for two years to get some of the signs up there, and just recently, they put some of the signs up within the neighborhood, you know, no jake brakes or compression brake. There's none on Highway 22 out at the edge of town. And isn't that where we probably want to have some of these signs? You see numerous cities out here have a large sign out at the edge of the outskirts of town saying that there's no jake brakes allowed within cities. You know, that's the city ordinance, but there's none out there. You look at the speeds, it is 25. It is a residential area. It's not any more than that. So if you look at the numbers of the people that are speeding down there, this is our homes. You know, so the people that are out there speeding, you should basically be able to catch a few people that are doing in excess of 25. But I would venture to guess that probably 80 to 90 percent of these people that are traveling down these streets are in excess of the 25. People walking down the sidewalks. I mean, I'm scared to walk out my sidewalk. You've got people coming out of some of the, off of Meadows and off of the trailer court that they're, they come out of there so fast sometimes that they're actually almost up on the sidewalk when they come out of there. That actually could get them under some of the exhibition driving, reckless driving besides speeding. You know, so some of the stuff there, if you look at the crosswalks, you know, they're not marked down there anymore. I mean, the paint has gone from that. And, you know, the only reference that it makes for anybody speeding down there would be emergency vehicles, and that's only if they're doing it where it doesn't endanger life or property. So if you look at some of the stuff that we're enduring, it's not real good. If you take a look at the routing also, under the federal regulations, under, it says that "A motor carrier transporting hazardous materials required to be marked or placeted shall operate the vehicle over routes which do not go through," and I emphasize that, "go through, or near heavily populated areas, places where crowds are assembled, tunnels, narrow streets, or alleys." It gives the three exceptions to that rule, and that would be, there's no practical alternative that's necessary for unloading, loading facilities, food, fuel, rest, repairs, or safe havens, or if they have to deviate because of an emergency situation. And it also states in there that operating convenience is not a basis for determining if a route can be used. I've been in a conversation with Department of Transportation on some of this stuff just recently too, and they pretty much concur that these truck drivers, there is no designated route within the city of a hazardous material route. That's never been done. But as a commercial driver, these drivers that are driving these hazardous material placeted vehicles should be looking at the routing, and they should be taken states because it comes through our neighborhood. If you take a look at the trailer court, the housing that goes into Meadows, the cul-de-sac that's down the street, and the buildings with ABEL. If you look at State's Avenue, that's adjacent to the properties that are there. When States was put in, and Mr. Jackson, you may have to help me on this one, but was States not put in, was there not reference that that was going to be a truck route too on the outskirts of the western side of town? I believe it was. It is made of concrete, it, the structure of it, it's a safer route for them to take, being four-lane, you know, to get through on that. So I believe that if you look at the regulations there, that we probably should be looking at that, and, you know, these trucks should actually be running down states to get them out of here, get them back out on the interstate so they're not within the city limits. They shouldn't be downtown of a lard heading that way also. So, you know, so that's one of the federal regulations, like I said, and that actually is some of the verbiage out of the Hazardous Material Compliance Manual, that every CDL driver out here that hauls hazardous materials should be complying with. They have to carry this with them in their vehicle by regulation. And if we took, take a look at the zoning stuff, out of the stuff on it, it makes basically some reference in there. I believe we're zoned R12 within the categories of that, correct, by being down there? Would that not be correct as a zoning? It is a residential zoning? And it does say that with that, it should be consistent with carrying the capacity of the infrastructure. I don't think it's handling. If you take a look at the roads and the way the condition the streets are there now, I mean, they're coming filling some of the puddles every once in a while. It's checkerboard so bad in front of my place and just concave that, you know, every single one of these trucks that come by our properties, our houses are shaking. I don't think that's the way that we want to probably run our city, is it not, that we have traffic like that that's probably destroying people's property? You know, so, and also, if you look at the comprehensive plan and some of the stuff out there, it makes reference there that, you know, we're supposed to follow the laws of the state. So we talked about some of the speeds of some of these trucks and the vehicles and stuff that are down there. It also makes reference that all parts of the plan were promote public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare for the complex thereafter adopted to purpose of set forth is supposed to alleviate the menace of the public safety resulting from inadequate provisions of traffic, thoroughfares in connection with and result of development of the city. But it also states in there under Section F to prevent the deterioration of property values and impairment and conditions making for desirable agricultural, residential, or commercial, or industrial developments in the case that it would result in lack of plannings, to make sure it's orderly, harmonious, and beneficial to the city. You know, so some of the stuff, even the planning makes references of what we should be doing, the routes and stuff. And I'm not naive that we're looking at a route to get the trucks around town. I mean, we don't have some of that stuff. We want to keep them off of Highway 22, and I agree with that. But I think that some of this stuff should actually be probably looked at, and I'm asking you to bring that back up again, look at it, and that you take A Street Southeast off of the truck route. But, you know, some of the stuff also, if you look at it, by making that a residential street, which definitely is the definition of it, it's not a state highway. The state patrol does not help with the enforcement of it. We don't have enough law enforcement. I've heard that from every single one of you guys about that we don't have enough police officers, and I can't hold that against them. I mean, you saw the numbers of the criminal activity and the crimes that were going on, the drugs and stuff like that. They're shorthanded, you know, so I believe they need some extra help and stuff out there too, so. But I just want to make you aware, this is my opinion of what's going on down there, and I think we need, you know, we need your help. I was here last August and brought this up to you when you guys approved the route, and I brought up some of the issues that we had at that time and asked you for your help. But there's nothing that's been done in that several months. Now, I'm asking you again, you know, we need some help down there. Any questions?
Mr. Vance, you and I had talked, and I went down shortly after that. Now, there's an intersection to the east of you, correct?
You've actually got, the intersections are down there would be Ninth, which is down by where the ABEL facility is at. You've got Meadows and Fourth, you've got Southview and Third, and Second and First.
But there's an intersection direct, just a few homes to your east of you, right?
Well, the homes to the east are, yeah, and then on the, basically on the east is the trailer or the manufactured homes.
Yeah, this would be a small part of it, but would a four-way stop there enhance it or make?
I've suggested that several times, that that may be some of the things that would probably alleviate some of the issues that we have down there. You know, I don't know who thinks that they have the right to drive down there, whether it be, you know, some of the trucking companies from, you know, south of here, you know, towns and places, the neighbors in fact, there's, you know, I'm not saying this is all oil-related either, because there's some of the neighbors that have had some issues there too, the way that they're driving. You know, some of the hazardous material trucks that are coming down the street, that's a serious violation for these people if they get caught 15 mile over speed limit. They lose their license. You know, so the out-of-state vehicles, I mean, we're seeing numerous ones, you probably see two, three North Dakota ones, and, you know, 10, 15 from different states out there. They're disregard for the laws of it too. So, you know, it's a mixed bag of things that are just causing this problem.
My next question would be for Chief. Did you, did we just not spend some overtime on officers down in that area, Chief, in the last month?
Yeah, they said they had, yes.
And if he could tell us what the results of that were, Chief?
Commissioner Decker, yes, we did. A couple of weekends ago, we did pay two different officers to spend a Saturday and Sunday down there, eight hours total for four-hour blocks to try to do some traffic enforcement activities down there, not only in that area, but also the rivers drive area as far as enforcing ATV and dirt bike violations. And I believe we had approximately about 20 violations that were cited in those two days.
Over an eight hour?
Eight hours.
Eight hours. So help us out, would that be considered pretty heavy activity in terms of citing for an area of that size, or?
You know, I believe if we would do the same enforcement activity in other areas of town, we would have got equal for possibly even more violations. We have a lot of, a lot of streets in our community that are, have more vehicle traffic. Ninth Street East, State's Avenue, Tenth Avenue East, just to name a few. But those are some of the results that we got in that area that weekend.
But don't you think that you did it on a weekend? Most of this truck traffic is probably during the week, these violators?
That's correct. Our main objective, you know, we had received complaints from people, we wanted to do it on a nice weekend when people are out in their ATVs, their dirt bikes, and so forth, which occurs during weekend hours, not during weekdays. We wanted to make an impact with that, and also do some traffic enforcement on A Street Southeast in that area.
But my concerns are, ATVs, while being an annoyance, are not destroying the road.
You're correct with that, but we receive complaints on ATVs and dirt bikes just as well as we do as truck traffic on A Street Southeast.
But again, an ATV isn't shaking his house apart.
Correct. We do what we can. I have four or five officers on duty at any time. It's hard to basically leave an officer on A Street Southeast just to enforce traffic violations, Commissioner Decker.
I know in the past, I've also made suggestions to the street department and Public Works about the intersection. Mr. Vance and I had visited the intersection on the west side of his house, the one coming out of Heartland, and I'm not sure what the street is there beside you, to the west.
That would be Third and Southview.
Putting in a four-way there to at least get them to at least have a break in the flow.
Mr. President?
I don't know if that would remedy it, but.
Commissioner Decker, I believe that might help, it'd help remedy some of the speed situations, but I think it's also going to increase possibly the stopping and starting of the truck traffic in that area, which could cause more of a noise nuisance as well.
President Johnson, Engineer Kubis, I think, we talked about that intersection, and maybe he wants to talk about the offset in the intersection and possible problems there.
I can't. Well, I think either one of those intersections, we could surely place a four-way stop. Neither of them lend themselves perfectly to a four-way stop because I don't know the chronological order it was plotted in, but the streets didn't line up exactly. One's fairly close, and the other one's offset a little bit more. A four-way stop could be placed. Engineering, I guess engineering guidance, the guidance we have on placing traffic control devices would say to not place a stop sign to reduce the speeds on a road because people are just going to accelerate that much faster to get up to the speeds that they felt they were comfortable driving before. Will it slow down the speeds at a certain point? Absolutely. I mean, unless they run the stop signs again. I would say, you know, the asphalt section along the entire street in Mr. Vance's neighborhood is, all the way from Highway 22 to Sixth Avenue Southeast, is at the end of its useful life. I think putting up a stop sign, where we've seen truck traffic in the past on State Avenue, where we get heavier truck traffic and a stop sign, we get rutting, and that pavement isn't going to fare very well. It's already in pretty tough shape, admittedly so. But, so I think we'd have more pavement problems than we do now. And then again, the noise. I know engine brakes are a tough thing to enforce, but if we introduce another stop sign there, I can guarantee you that kind of infraction or incident is going to go up. Whether we can enforce it better or not, putting another stop sign there, you know, people are going to stop more, accelerate more, grab gears, upshifting and downshifting. So the speed control might be a trade-off for some increased noise and for some pavement deterioration. The other thing I would say is, it's not a perfect route. You know, we didn't get to design truck routes 30 years ago or 40 years ago in Dickinson. We took the best we had at the time. We do have on our capital improvement program list a Southwest, a Northeast, and a Southeast bypass. You know, when those might happen would probably be a function of future funding in the 2017 and 2019 legislative sessions. But right now, we've estimated, based on some costs the DOT has gotten on the Northwest bypass, a $30 million Southeast bypass. So we acknowledge it isn't the best place. So we acknowledge it, it isn't the best place for trucks. In a perfect world, we'd have that money today and we could, we could start working on, on getting them out of town, probably from Exit sixty-four on the very east end of town, and, and further east and further south out of town. But today, this is the, the issue we have. I wasn't aware of the hazardous truck regulations that you brought up, Mr. Vance. I think we need to look into that and do the best we can to get those kind of vehicles, again, in the best place we can in town.
Yeah, I, I've actually talked to the state patrol too on this, and, you know, they said that that's not their primary enforcement area, but they said that they would assist someone at, you know, if they're on the, that street or something, if they saw something, they would actually stop somebody too, so. But by virtue of that, you know, when you start taking these trucks and taking them off of the state highways, you know, that's some of the stuff that you have, you have less enforcement with them too. And we're seeing a lot of these vehicles, these guys are talking on their cell phones, which is a major violation also, the straight pipes and stuff in their trucks, the noise of, I, I think the other night, when we talked about some of the hazardous material stuff, the other evening, I counted in excess of thirty, and hydro ammonia tanker trucks coming through there. And the biggest percentage of them, and I would say at least seventy percent or more, had straight pipes on their vehicles.
President Johnson, I, I would just like to add one more thing on, on the stop signs. I know Commissioner Decker did talk to me about it, but Engineer Kubis is right, if, if there's a street that we have speeding, we don't use stop signs to regulate speed. All the manuals we used, all the years I've been in it, you don't use stop signs to regulate speed on the street, so.
But if, if I recall some of the stuff that I've read under the MUTCD, which is the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is the guidelines for setting signings and stuff out there, it does say that for public safety, it may be used. That is a public safety concern if they're, if you can't control it any other way.
I, I would agree though, that if we did place the stop signs, I, I believe the noise and the condition of the pavement would deteriorate.
I'd have to agree with that too, that I think that's going to actually cause an issue with the, the noise portion of it, then you're going to be looking at some of the enforcement there, so. You know, the, it's not just these trucks out there too, it's the individuals, and I'm sure you've heard that downtown with the diesel pickups and exhaust that these guys have got on them and the noise that they've got with that, so.
That and the railroad.
It's, it's, you know, through the whole town with some of that stuff too, but it's really loud down there.
I don't think bad driving is limited to East.
No, it's, it's not.
I mean, we, we personally see it every day in, in the community, and, you know, you, I think we have a number of drivers whose view of a four-way stop is if there's no cop, there's no stop. And, you know, I think we've all witnessed that, so, you know, I would have my doubts with a four-way stop down there, also especially during the times of, say, lower traffic activity. I think a lot of these drivers just ignore the stop sign, treat it as a yield sign. Having, having said that, I mean, if, if the citizens down there want to try a four-way stop and see if it gets any, you know, if it's a, a better situation than what you have now, I don't, a four-way stop is a low-cost thing, I'm not, wouldn't be opposed to doing that, but I, I think some of our department heads do, you know, you'll probably solve one issue or make one issue better and make another poorer, but, you know, not opposed to trying that. And, and if, in terms of regulating speed, short of, you know, stationing a, a police officer full-time, I don't know what else you might have to do.
Well, you know, some of the stuff on the signage portion of it too is, I've had a bunch of people say that they don't think, didn't know that was twenty-five. The MUTCD does make references on the size of a sign by speed, that it has to be a minimum size, but it can be increased in size, and some of the municipalities have actually put larger signs up than was required for it. So by virtue of, you take a twenty-five sign, instead of having the size that you typically see around town, they, they get one that is the larger that you'd see like on the interstate, put that out there. You've got the radar signs that can be put up there, you see a lot of cities up there putting quite a few of those, and I think we could probably use a lot more of those within the city of Dickinson. That helps with some of the people, reminds them that they are not. I mean, you know, there's a lot of them out here that if they're going to speed, they're going to speed, it makes no difference what you've got out there, but, you know, for some of those.
I do notice a lot of twenty-five mile an hour speed signs that don't meet MUTCD in the right of way. Is that something you put out there?
What's that?
I, I did, I have noticed a lot of non-conforming.
All, all the neighbors, yeah, you know, because if you put some of the stuff out there, it's basically small stuff, it's an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper is what it is. Just to try to remind some of the stuff, and it has helped a little bit, but it does not solve the problem. Same with our signs that we put out there, please slow down. There's some of the people have been actually, you know, following some of that stuff, but, you know, overall, the, the speeds are still there. So, you know, I, I mean, we're, we're actually endangered by some of the stuff. I, I'm worried about that somebody's going to drive through my house and into my house like that shed that we had on States. Somebody there saw that they, it was dangerous enough that they put the barricades that are the same as you have out on the highway, on the interstates and stuff, so, you know, that, that does to me indicate that somebody thinks there's some problems down in the south side of town, and, you know, some of the areas that we've got with that coming into there, so. I happened to have been on the phone that morning, calling and telling the dispatch that we had numerous people early in the morning that were tearing up and down the streets and the noise and stuff we had the day that they had the fatality on States. You know, so, there, there's stuff that goes on, it's not just, you know, the afternoon, evenings, it's, it's early in the mornings and stuff too, that these guys are tearing up and down these streets. I found more alcohol bottles in my front yard over the last couple of years than I've seen probably in the twenty-five years that I've been here. It's just those little individual alcohol, plastic ones, and beer bottles and cans and stuff. You know, you're seeing a lot of these vehicles tearing down to the bottle shop down there. So I'm thinking that there's probably a large number of people that are probably, if you look at it, are not in compliance with the, the alcohol portions of our, our laws of the state. So there's numerous things down there that I think these get addressed. I, I know there's problems throughout the whole course of town, but I work on it to tell you that there's some problems down there and, you know, that we'd like something done with it. And I'm sure my neighbors would probably like to make a couple of comments there too, but I just wanted to bring out now some of the concerns that I have, so.
Okay, well, thank you for being here again.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to address our concerns.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
My name is Robert Goldster and live at seven fifty-nine South Main, right across the street from Heartland Homes, what I call their dump grounds. That is where they dump all their leftover dirt that they haul all over the trailer court. That yard is pure sand, and when we get a wind from the southeast or from the south or from the, we get all that sand in our yard and in our houses. And they haul stuff in there to hold that sand down, but what they haul is some more sand in there. That sure don't make much sense to try and hold that dirt down in that yard. So we got all kinds of problems along with the traffic problem. And they have these old equipment that's there. And they've got one old dump truck there, a yellow, white one, when they start that thing up, that's a diesel, and there's so much smoke you can't even see the truck. When the wind is right, our house is full of diesel smoke, and it takes a long time to get it cleaned out. So I've been in and out, wondering if the city can't do something to help us, they either move some of that stuff away there, have them erect an eight-foot fence to hold that sand inside there or something. I still think the city could help us out with something on that. There's no reason we should have to live that way. And, you know, our taxes keep going up, but we can't get no results on that. Last time I was in here, I asked if that made any difference on your taxes where you live. Yeah, it did. Yeah, it sure did. Mine went up seven thousand dollars this year again, but I still got to put up the sand, the smoke, the dirt, and the noise and everything along with it. And Coling's got their construction shop, they got a nice fence along the road, and I can't see why the city don't make them put up a fence or move their equipment further back and level out that dirt pile and seed it or something to keep the dirt down. No reason why we should have to live that way. I know you guys wouldn't want to live that way. You open your window, your house is full of sand. If the wind is right, you, you can keep cleaning and dusting, you can't get rid of the sand. I washed the house down one day, my windows, next day the wife says, sure wasted your time, didn't you? And I says, yeah, it was all one dirt, you got the wind from the right way and everything was dirty again. So I figured, come in and see if you guys can't get together and something, you have them do something with that. And I never did figure out how they ever got that as a commercial construction site like that, when it was originally just a trailer court with a mailbox and an office there, and all of a sudden this office moves in and they got their construction site in there, where they do all their construction work in. Did they ever come to the city and get a permit to change that or anything? And they could do that?
When you're talking construction, what are they?
Well, where they're, they have their main construction office.
They're actually.
Originally, that was just an office for the trailer court and mailbox. And then when this office came in, they made that their main construction site where they bring in broken trailers, keep all their construction equipment in there that they use to maintain the trailer court.
Okay, so they're using, they're rebuilding trailers?
Well, they had some trailers, they, they pulled, pulled in there and then they'd start remodeling, but they finally pulled them out, but they got all their extru- construction equipment parked in there, made kind of a, a business construction area for the trailer court. And I know years ago, it never was that, it was just designated as a mailbox and a trailer court office. Well, they tore that all out and made kind of a little workshop in there, and they keep all their construction equipment there. So I, I didn't know if they ever got a permit to change that when they came in and did that, or what.
Well, I think city engineer wants to say something.
Just wanted, could you restate your address again?
Seven fifty-nine South Main. And right in the corner of Eighth Street, the truck route and Second Avenue Southeast. And right across the road is the.
Okay, and, and I believe the property there is zoned, I believe it's zoned mobile home still, and so we'd have to look into the use. There is, there is, you know, you can see in an aerial photo, construction going on there, working on trailers and, and everything else. And if, if the code would, would permit the use but require a fence, I think we would be happy to talk to the property owner.
They should be able to do something with the yard to keep that sand on, other than pouring sand, putting sand on it, they could all gravel or anything to hold the sand on and put a fence to hide all that crap.
Is that, who's responsible for looking into this? Is that engineering, or?
Well, I think the, the planning department could look into the zoning and the allowable uses there, and then the building official would probably send out a letter if the, something was required to bring them into compliance, if they were out of compliance.
And even if they're, let's say, they're technically in compliance, do, can we at least talk with the, the owners of this business and point out that they're inconveniencing their neighbors?
I think we could, yeah.
I know, I've even went over to there to talk to them, see if we couldn't get something done about it, and he told me, do whatever you have to do.
So he wasn't too cooperative then?
Pardon?
He wasn't very cooperative?
No, not at all.
Well, we'll have our, our officials take a close look at.
Thank you. Another item on that same subject with that, they've also last year hauled in numerous loads of dirt and, and put in that area. They're driving into the trailer court itself and then using one of the lots, drive into that, that area. So the dust that we had off that was just unbelievable, like you said, we can't even open our windows anymore. And I, I believe that if you look at some of the stuff on that, does that not, not fall into some of the categories that they'd have to have permits for the water runoff and wetlands, because that falls kind of in the, the runage toward the Hart River there?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if we.
Want to look at also?
Yeah, I don't know if we know the answer to that question right at the moment, but I mean, I think we'll have our, our people look at that whole area and make sure that, that they're complying.
But with summer coming up, you know, most of us like to get some fresh air in our houses too, so that the dust, some of it, and at least some dust abatement programs or something with it.
We understand, we've.
Thank you.
We've lived with a lot of dust in this community in the last few years with all the development, but this is something, Mr. Castle, we, you know, have the appropriate city officials go down and investigate, please.
We have an executive team meeting scheduled, and I've already asked that that be put on our agenda, so we'll, we'll be following up on these items this week.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? If not, Chair would entertain a motion then to adjourn.
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, the motion carries.